Good evening and welcome to the September 20th meeting for the Lake Forest City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Novett.
Here.
Alderman Widman is absent. Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh is absent. Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Seven present, two absent. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you Beth. Will you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by Mayor. I just have one brief comment, and that is that we will not have on the agenda this evening anything on affordable housing. Our Alderman, Alderman Marsh, who is the head of the Housing Trust, has been called out of town for work, and therefore that will be pushed back to the October 4th meeting. That concludes my comments this evening on that moment. The next is comments by City Manager, which we have our acting City Manager, Karina Walters. Karina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I just have one comment this evening for the community spotlight. It's actually my pleasure to introduce Executive Director of the Ragdale Foundation Susan Tillot to kind of brief the Council and the city of upcoming events.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Alderman, staff and guests, my name's Susan Tillot. I am the Executive Director of the Ragdale Foundation at 1230 North Green Bay Road. I usually update you on public programs and residents, and I do want to note that this weekend is Novel Affair for Ragdale. I'm sure you've seen posters around town. I'm happy to say that for the fourth year in a row, it is sold out. This is where we bring dozens of bestselling authors into town, and a total of about 200 people have wonderful conversation about books. So it's a very unique thing about Lake Forest. The only other community that I know it is done in is, I think Mendocino in California. And it's a wonderful, wonderful event, so we're really looking forward to that. However, I figured that this year that you were particularly interested in hearing about finances and about our plans for the renovation of the Ragdale House. And I want to say again, thank you very much for the loan commitment of $2 million that you made to us last March. We're conscious that these are changing times and particularly challenging times for not-for-profits. And we want you to know that we're moving ahead with the project, but with extreme caution. We delayed our original start date from the summer of 2010 until the first part of 2011. That is when and if we have raised $1.5 million in cash and pledges in the campaign. The loan commitment provided us with some good momentum, and I'm pleased to say that one year into the campaign, we have raised $1.2 million, which is an average of $100,000 a month. We're fortunate to have received some recent help in this, in the major gifts portion from Mr. John Bryan, who cut his teeth on Millennium Park and the Art Institute of Chicago. So we're very pleased that he's adopted us, and he's going to be hosting an event in October. So in bad times, it's good to have good friends, and we have the best. On the annual operations side, we're holding our own. Last year was difficult for every not-for-profit, but our most recent audit showed that we were $600,000 ahead of where we were in 2008. And Dennis O'Brien, who's our auditor, felt that the organization showed real signs of health. Our annual income is up more than $100,000 from last year. And I'm really proud to say that partially this is because of a very generous donation by a bestselling author who wrote her book at Ragdale and has given back. We've begun a five-year planning model, which includes the repayment of the loan by the middle of 2015. With all these positive signs, our board just recently voted to move ahead with a letter of intent to our contractors, Bullion Andrews. This will allow them to negotiate, it's a very good time of year to negotiate, and we'll get real prices. So I just want to say thank you again for your support. We feel like this is the best kind of partnership. We're out there working very hard to raise $3 million private dollars for your beautiful Ragdale House that we're particularly pleased to have for the rest of the 21st century. I think it's really one of the city's greatest architectural and cultural treasures, and this is the only way to give it what it needs. I'm happy to take questions if you have specifics.
Any questions or comments?
So your plan would be to break ground in January?
Yes.
Okay. And from a residence perspective, are you not going to have residence then?
In fact, we haven't had residence in the Ragdale House since last spring because we thought we were starting in the summer. It's actually worked out beautifully that instead of closing the house, we've opened it wide up. We've had exhibitions and lectures and talks. We're participating in Woodlands' Winter Wonder Walk, which will bring 500 people. So we've really thrown the doors wide open before we close them. But we hope that we can start the geothermal portion when the ground is hard early in the year.
Susan, I just wanted to congratulate you. As you said, the benefit this weekend is a sellout. And of course, in these times to have a sellout is challenging.
It is challenging, so we're really thrilled. We have 10 authors this year. I think we've grown this from six to eight to 10. So we have more authors and more people attending this year than ever in what is admittedly a really tough climate.
A little off the topic, how did the studio turn out after the...
Oh, great. If you haven't seen it, I really would invite you to come over to see it.
Looked in the windows, but that's about it.
Yeah. I think it's aging nicely into the prairie. Open Lands tells us it's going to take five to seven years to really bring the prairie back around it. But the artists are absolutely loving it. They love being out there with the deer and all the wildlife. So it's worked out absolutely beautifully.
I'm just curious, can you divulge who the author was in the book? I mean, that's a nice thing to promote.
I can. Yes. I asked her for permission. Audrey Niffenegger, who wrote The Time Traveler's Wife. And Audrey's one of our great success stories. She came to Ragdale first as a visual artist, and she's a brilliant woman. And one year she said, "You know, my printmaking's not going well. I'd really like to work on my novel." And we said, "Okay." And it turned out to be an international bestseller. And she will be speaking at the Ragdale House on Saturday night as part of Novel Affair. So it's a really wonderful gift. And when she handed me the check, she said, "I want people to understand that this is money that comes from what goes on at Ragdale. We go there to do our work. We're unknown, and in the best of all possible worlds, this is what happens." So it was our largest gift ever, and certainly the most heartfelt.
That's a great story right there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. I promise you pictures next year. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only other comment that I have this evening is just a reminder that we are trying to plan a town hall meeting later on in the year. And if you can provide your availability to Susan Banks at your earliest opportunity, we will be able to plan forward with that.
We're aiming sort of late October and November?
Late October.
Okay. And any night of the week? You're looking for everything?
Whatever your availability is, and staff can collect that time, and it'll probably be in the evening. I think last time we did it was probably about 7:00 PM at Dickinson Hall. So with that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Our next item on the agenda is Council Committee Reports, the first being the Finance Committee, Alderman Grumhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a Finance Committee meeting earlier this evening. It was a busy agenda. We started the initial kickoff for our fiscal year 12 budget by reviewing the fiscal policy, the mission statement and the budget calendar, as well as looking at an updated fund forecast. We also spent some time talking about the recycling report and the recycling survey. We have on the agenda consideration of the fiscal year 12 fiscal policy, but given our discussions at the meeting in which I proposed to add some additional language, we are going to table that to a later session so that we can put that language together. But certainly, we will continue to press forward on the budget and getting the fiscal policy document fully up to date. And that's all I have for comments.
Thank you, David. Our next two items on the agenda are actually Housing Trust and the Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee. Both of those are chaired by Alderman Marsh. Alderman Marsh is absent this evening, so we will not have a report on those. And also, anyone who came in late, just another update, we will not be speaking about the affordable housing this evening, as that is also chaired by Alderman Marsh, and he is not here this evening. Therefore, our next item on the agenda is the Legal Committee, Alderman Palmer.
The Legal Committee met last week in executive session to consider pending litigation. That's all I can say.
Short and sweet, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Senior Resource Commission, Alderman Novett.
And we did have a meeting last Monday, September 13th. And largely, the meeting started off with discussing the success of the Lake Forest High School football team, but it progressed to the topic of the Settlers' Green Project and concerns that the Senior Resource Board had as far as where the seniors fit into that project, if they fit into that project. And at some future time, I'm sure the committee will have an opportunity to meet with the persons from Settlers Square to further educate. There was some discussion on budget. The budget for the Senior Resource Center is healthy at this point. There has been an opportunity to pare down certain expenses, but I think the concern of the committee as a whole is trying to expand membership to get more people involved from the community of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff at this point. That's about it, though.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is Public Works Committee, Alderman Luby.
Public Works has a lot going on, certainly in the summertime. Western Avenue is almost finished. We're going through the punch list to fix the final things. The plantings went in last weekend in the rain. They look good. You'll be surprised when you see them all there. Green Bay Road has the base coat on. They should be finishing the top coat very soon. I would expect that to happen. Old Elm, can I look to the back? Ramish, is Old Elm almost done?
Yes, maybe next week.
Next week, so you'll be able to travel back through Old Elm. In our meeting that we had this evening, we had an extensive report on the city snow plowing plan, and got the numbers that it takes 45 people to work and handle the snow plowing in the city, and the progress with which we go through and do the main roads and the downtown area, et cetera. We had a couple of comments from the members of the committee on that, but it's basically the same way we've been doing it last year, and it should be very efficient with the salt we put down. And we have plenty of salt right now.
We do have plenty of salt.
We're in good shape on the salt, and so hopefully that should not be a problem. Hopefully, we won't have that much snow.
Are we outsourcing any of the snow plowing at this point?
No, we're doing it all in-house.
Have we looked at that at all?
Well, we have people here to do it. We have our trucks all ready. So unless we have one of these tremendous snows where we need extra dump trucks to move the snow around, we will tend not to outsource. At least for the basic plowing that goes on. I know a couple of years ago, we had to bring in some, you know, heavy-duty machinery because there was so much snow. But hopefully, we'll have a light year. We won't need to do that at all. The schools do discuss that. The schools plow their own lots, so we pave them, they plow them.
The Green Bay Road construction, are we close?
This week, they're going to do the structural adjustments, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, like today. So you must have noticed some crews working, and then also get the loops in at the intersections. So we are hopeful that fabric on Thursday and then Friday is start of the final lift. So again, if there's a rain, then everything gets pushed out. But basically, by end of next week, we should have everything done.
How long's the final lift going to be?
Final lift, same thing with the binder, it goes two to three days to get the final lift done.
Is there any way we can not do work at 7:30, 7:45 in the morning? I mean, my understanding is Deer Path and Green Bay this morning was a complete lockbox, that they were working on it. You've obviously got, you know, Deer Path, you've got St. Mary's, it's the major thoroughfare.
On the structure adjustments? Yeah, once we are past with the structure, maybe we can request the contractor to see.
Why don't we just not start until late 15, when everyone's in school?
Right, they all start at seven, so it all depends on if they're coming from north or south, and then they hit Deer Path intersection. But we will request the contractor, at least when they do the loops at the Green Bay and Deer Path, to see if they can do it after nine or so.
Last week, it was backed up all the way to Waukegan.
Right, no, it's crazy.
Forty-five minutes to get in, and then they were doing the corner of Deer Path and Green Bay when the buses were trying to get out of the school at 3:20. I mean, it was just unbelievable, the mess.
I mean, I feel like we waited like three and a half weeks for the strike, and then another four weeks for them to get their act together, so that maybe in the mornings, they could wait two hours for us to clear all the traffic.
Right, I think we can request, but the thing is like, then the evening rush hour, it will affect evening rush hour because they try to work eight hours, and usually it's like 7:00 to 3:30. That way, at least, they're trying to get clear by the evening rush hour, so...
They could do, you know, six to midnight or something.
Or they could just not work on that one intersection, you know, I mean, that's the problem.
Sure, I mean, again, we will let the contractor know, at least for the loops, when they do the loop work, see if they can do it after 9:00 AM.
It just seems like it's all or nothing, so, you know, Old Elm's going to be opened up, and Green Bay will be at the same time, you know, kind of.
Yeah, Old Elm, again, I think it's a much shorter span, but Green Bay, because it's like a main thoroughfare for a lot of people, so that Green Bay does get backed up.
Well, they have no idea that it's going to be shut down at the intersection. So they don't know to take an alternate way even into town.
Right, no. Again, we will have the request to contract.
Or get some faster flaggers out there who kind of look at the traffic.
Can I ask one other question about the lights on Western? So we have lights on Western, both at Woodlands and at Illinois. I've had a couple of calls from people asking me, "Why do those lights need to be on seven days a week, 24 hours a day?" You know, there are times you need them, there are a lot of times you don't need them. I mean, one of the things that, quite frankly, was great was when Illinois was under construction, and we had no streetlights there and just stop signs. Most of the time, that intersection worked much, much better, because you pull up there, there's no one there, you stop and then you go.
It was fantastic.
And Woodlands, the same way, you know, in the morning, we need it at Woodlands. On Sunday afternoon, when you turn on Woodlands and you're waiting at Western for three minutes while that light changes, and there's not one car that goes by, you know, it's kind of a waste of time. So is, you know, is there any way we can say the lights are going to run in these hours and off hours?
And go to the flashing red?
Yeah, we can look into that. I think we can do some, what we do is like, we do some traffic counts, and then we'll see if the volume is really low, then we can do the flashing red, maybe during the midnight hours or so. We can look into that.
Well, more than midnight hours, but I mean, Western and Illinois worked very well with just the stop signs, once they knew that they were there.
Right. But they're on what we call is a free loop. It's not like it's timed or something, so it does get activated. Right.
It's like Conway Farm.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's our favorite time.
You have to, I mean, you pull up and it doesn't change.
It's not on a sensor like other things are, other roads are.
It's two to three minutes.
They are, but it's timed, it's what is a free time. But what we'll do, I think, just to be on this, you know, just to make sure everything works away, we'll conduct a traffic count and make sure that if the traffic counts are lower in certain hours, we can look into changing into flashing red, and we have to bring it back to the council anyhow.
And Waukegan and Everett has put that on the list, too.
Yeah, you'll never...
That's another deadly one out there.
You'll never get that one, though, because it stays.
Yeah, we'll try that.
Okay. And that wraps it up from the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Alderman Luby. The next item is the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, which I will report on. Few items here. Our next committee meeting is September 27th here at City Hall Conference Room. The city is looking to host a Transportation Safety Week in October 2010. The Stafford and Zastop, Operation Lifesaver, Metro and Amtrak to participate. We're also having the committee look at cell phone enforcement actions while driving in school zones. We have a new state law on that. I know they're looking at enforcement actions, and that's become very critical with in and around the high school and the middle school. Also have, in late July of this year, the city applied for a grant under the High Speed Rail at Great Crossing Fund. This is for the Milwaukee District North Train Line for an underpass. And my understanding is that we should be notified and awarded, or possibly awarded that by the end of September of this year. So that's the update on the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee. Any other... The next item is comments by council members. Any additional comments this evening?
I have one. On Sunday, I was out getting my car washed, and I bumped into Mr. Gordon. And I had someone at the car wash saying, you know, "Why is the city working on Sundays?" So I had the perfect opportunity to ask him. And it turns out that his guys on overtime are half the prevailing wage. We're saving money, getting the work done early. He had been there since 4:30 in the morning placing plants. I think it looks great. The amount of work that was getting done was overwhelming, and it just really was a great thing to see, that kind of effort being made by so many people. I just wanted to, it was really nice, so thanks for that, so.
Avoiding another shutdown on Western.
Absolutely. Sorry?
Avoiding another shutdown on Western.
Exactly, right.
Going to get it done when there was no traffic, so it was good.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can you give me a reminder on the park board meeting, open house? That's next week, next Tuesday, is that right?
Twenty-eighth, I think.
Twenty-eighth, yeah.
So it's Tuesday, the 28th, 7:00 PM, is there's going to be comments by Mary and the park board, and then there's...
It's going to be round tables at 7:30 or something like that?
Okay.
Right.
All right, so a week from tomorrow, okay.
Our next item on the agenda is opportunity for public to address the City Council on non-agenda items.
Bob Esquazi, 172 Washington Road. I'm here, this is not the first time I've been up here on this particular subject, but it's all about the parking on Washington Road at College. There's no parking sign up there that says, "No parking to the corner," which is about six feet away from the corner. Beyond that, backwards, there's six cars every day parked there from the college kids. The problem here is that this is a two-lane road, and there's only two, this is one of the main roads of Lake Forest traveling to the south side. In order for them to get past that, the cars coming north have to go onto the southbound lane. If somebody's coming around the corner from College onto Washington Road, there's an accident, if there is. But it hasn't happened yet that I know of, but it will. Not yesterday, but Friday, the high school track team practices down that way. They run down, I think it's a mile and a half or two miles, and they run. They were at that corner, right at the parking where those cars are, on the other media, on the southbound lane, and a lady came across the College Road exit and almost hit the kids. And it's going to happen. There's no two ways about it. It's going to happen. But my question is this. I live on Washington Road. If I park my car out on Washington Road and leave it there for any time at all, maybe an hour, we'll say, I'll get a ticket. I have a vehicle tag. I have a state tag. I pay taxes to the community. These kids are up there. These cars are not from the state. They have no vehicle tag, no state tag, and they're parking there all day long, and nothing happens to them. They're parking on the parkway. Now, another question I have, how much does it cost to fix the parkways that they go around fixing with the black dirt? This is very expensive. Well, these kids are pulling up there every day on property that's been fixed. Anyhow, that's part of that. Okay, now, that's that problem. Now, I've got one other problem. I watched a rerun of the last meeting, and they were talking about getting sponsors for trees and putting plaques on trees and all of that in parks. Do I recall that? Okay. Does anyone recall Mr. Baberski? Does anyone know Mr. Baberski?
I recall.
No. Do you? Well, I'll tell you who he was. He's the guy that had the corner lot where Open Lands has the corner on Green Bay and Deer Path, where the park is. That was Mr. Baberski's donation to the city of Lake Forest. And he had that, where the Open Lands has their...
It was to Lake Forest.
Their plaque up there now, that was Baberski Park. So be careful when you get a grant from anybody or a gift. It usually doesn't work out, like at Dyke Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Is Washington limited parking or not?
Any other comments this evening by the public? No, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, is Consent Agenda. We have two items on the agenda, one being Approval of the Minutes from September 7th, 2010 meeting, and the second, which I believe will have a presentation here by Peter Gordon. If you wish to take them both at once, or do the Minutes, and then let Peter come on up, it's your choice.
I can make a motion to approve the Minutes and get that out.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Second.
Is this a...
Second, we have voices, fine.
Voice vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose, motion carries, and we'll, we'll handle the next item then, being Award of a Contract for Installation of Holiday Lights, presented by Peter Gordon, City Forester and Supervisor of Parks and Forestry.
Good evening, Mayor Cowie, members. I'm the city council. This evening, we have before you a consent agenda item for the approval of the contract for holiday lighting. And if you have any questions based on the information I've presented to you, I'm certainly happy to go ahead and entertain them.
Peter, who's been doing this in the past?
Last year was Landscape Concepts, prior to that, it was Illuminite Holiday Services.
And I'm assuming we bid a two-year contract?
This is a two-year contract. Years previous, we did go do a three-year contract, but we thought, based on the current financial environment, that a two-year contract was certainly going to be better for us. In addition, this year, there are no holiday lights on the trees currently, we stripped them all off. So the two-year contract consists of putting them all back on and then patching them next year.
So that's why it's so much, so much difference in the year one.
Typical lifespan, you keep them two years, or is that how?
We replaced all those trees, right?
Well, it's been a mix of things. We did lose a lot of trees this year. The trees are growing quite quickly, so they do go ahead and stretch the lights, and therefore, it's very hard to sometimes get the lights back on the same exact spot to go ahead and make things work. So I would say two to three years is probably maximum.
And with the newer trees, there's no risk of putting all the lights on and leaving them there? It's not a, doesn't hurt the tree?
We'd like to get them off, at least at the end of the second year. That is a concern of ours, especially when they're, the lights are getting installed the first year. We're concerned about them breaking branches and certainly doing other damage to some of the new ground cover that's been recently planted.
And it sounds like this group has good experience in other places, and they were a little bit?
They were a little bit. We did call on references, they did seem to check out, it appears that Highland Park will be using this company as well again this year, so we're excited to work with them. We met them on site Friday, just to see if they had any questions, and make sure they were still interested before we came before you tonight for tonight's council meeting.
The only comment I would have with this, whoever does the work, is that they don't go and close off whole sections of Western Avenue parking to do the trees in the middle of the day, because the businesses have suffered all summer with that, and I think one more incident of coming in, so that if they do it, you know, it's one tree, a couple of places at a time. And I know last year, they had whole sections that they, you know, marked off to save, that it would be open for them, and I know I'll hear from a lot of the people along there, if we're keeping the shoppers from being able to park.
Sure, we can work with them to maybe alternate trees to kind of break up some of that parking closure.
Yeah.
We're kind of bound also by the railroad. They prefer that we don't work until after nine and quit before three, and so there's some limited exposure that we can do, work on along the railroad tracks as well. So we can ask that maybe they cone off a quarter of the parking spots per side, so that they can go ahead and open up a lot of those spaces to the consumers.
I mean, as they finish, let the people park.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
So roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gromhaus.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, thank you, Peter. Your landscaping downtown looks great, beautiful, good job. Our next item on the agenda this evening is additional items for council discussion. We have a very big item to discuss this evening. We have an alderman who unfortunately is gonna be stepping down, because he's, he's moving from one ward to another. Greg Hanrahan, who's served us extremely well for the last few years, and I know he's got one more term left, and it's certainly my hope, and I think the rest of the council and the city's hope, that we're gonna keep a real strong arm on him, and have him, when he gets over to the first ward, and before the suitcases are unpacked, we're gonna knock on the door and say, "Okay, come on back and sit over here on this side of the dais now, and serve us from that side of the table for the rest of your term," so.
You better ask the third ward residents about that.
Ask your wife.
Yeah, that's important. But, you know, I think for one, as we've all been in these shoes, and certainly all the hard work you've done, but we know that it's, it's, it's an awful lot of commitment, an awful lot of time and energy expended, and as, as people know, we're all reading about all these other communities, we're all volunteers, we don't get paid. I'm the only one that gets paid, I think it's ten dollars a term, and I'm sure that's overpaid in most people's minds, so. But, I mean, you know, this is done to serve the community, this is done to help, you know, give back, and Greg has done that tirelessly, selfishly, and we certainly thank you for everything you've done. I have a resolution that I wanna read, and then I'm sure we're gonna hear from the rest of the aldermen that wanna put in a few good words for you as well. But I wanna read a resolution this evening. This is for Greg Hanrahan, and it reads, "Whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the city council, finance committee, public works committee, and lay us on to the Croya Parks and Recreation Departments. Whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees and the duties of the city council, and on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication. And whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Lake Forest, Illinois, hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to Greg Hanrahan for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the city council and adopted the twentieth day of September two thousand and ten." So Greg?
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I'll leave it open to the rest of your council members, I'm sure you have a lot of...
Well, I'm gonna miss Greg sitting next to me here. He's been a, a great asset to the council. He's a lot of fun during the meetings, with his thoughtfulness over the issues, and positive input into the council, and he well represents the citizens of Lake Forest, and really has the citizens in mind, as well as the taxpayers out there for everything that we do, so, and you've been great.
Thank you, Jim. I'm gonna miss you, Greg, and maybe they'll fix the chair after you're gone.
I moved it already.
And I've had a little more of the pleasure, because I was able to serve along with John on zoning, and Greg was on zoning, so we've had a few more years together. But I've experienced Greg's comments, and I've enjoyed participating with you and zoning and city council, and I had the pleasure of sitting with you at a basketball game for Lake Forest High School. And those three events or three opportunities certainly convinced me that you're here because you wanna be here, you're here because you care about the community, and everything you've said during the course of the time I've participated with you is heartfelt. I'm gonna miss you, but maybe you'll be back, like one of those movies, maybe it'll be a Hanrahan part two, but sincerely, sincerely, you'll... I'm sure I'll see you around, but I'll miss participating with you.
Well, I better go next, 'cause I don't know you that well. Dave does, and I don't wanna say the last word, but I'll miss you being on the, on the city council and hope to see you back.
You know, I would just echo all of those comments. Greg, you know, you've been a tremendous asset to this council and the city for many years. You're obviously deeply involved in the city, you know what goes on here, and that experience has been, you know, great for the council and, and great for, you know, what you've been able to do for the citizens. You're certainly a strong and stable voice on this council. You know, you were a huge help to me when we worked together on the Park and Rec ad hoc committee. You know, I think we made a lot of progress on that, and a lot of that was due to your knowledge from the park board and from, you know, all your kids' activities with the sports and everything, in terms of being able to give, you know, just a lot of perspective and a lot of good ideas on that. So, you know, we're certainly gonna miss you. I think the good news is, you know, my seat, you're gonna, you can have my seat in eight months. When I'm, I'm finished here, I'll, I'll keep it warm for you, and I'll be on extended lame duck status, assuming your, your wife and kids will permit you to come back to us, so. But we've obviously been very fortunate to have you, we're, we're sorry to lose you here in the, you know, next few months. You're gonna miss lots of fun, budgets and affordable housing and everything else, but, you know, we'll certainly catch you up, catch you back up on it. And the last thing I would say is Kent and my phone mail and email, phone numbers and emails, lose them.
Now, delete them, please.
Now that you, now that you've finally seen the light and, and come over to the, to the, to the first ward, so. Anyway, wish you all the best, and we know we'll see you around.
Well, we're hoping that we're just gonna give you a few months' rest, well-deserved rest, and then come back and get you back up here again, so.
Thank you.
Again, you've, you've done a tremendous job for the city, you've done a tremendous job for the ward, and we're gonna miss you even if it's in a short time period here, and we'd love to have you back as soon as we can get you back. Well, I usually don't speak very long, but I, I do have to say a few thank yous, so I had to type up something, so I could make sure I remembered everyone. So thanks to everyone and their comments, I really appreciate it. There are a lot of people to thank, and obviously the first people are the residents of the third ward, who stuck by me for the last three and a half years, and, and it's really a testament to an average citizen, 'cause that's what I am. I'm not like these others, they're business owners, lawyers, financial gurus, bankers. I'm just an average guy that just happened to get voted in the third ward, and I thank the residents for that, because no one would've thought that a kid from Deer Path and Lake Forest High School would be sitting on the city council. I know my parents sure didn't think I was. Maybe it's, it goes back to former alderman Tom Swarthout, who said at one roast that I exceeded his expectations. So there was definitely a, a low bar that I, I met and went past, so I thank Tom for that great encouragement early in my career. Second is, is obviously my family, as David and everyone else has attested to, my wife Karen for really picking the ball up, someone who works a lot, as she does with her full-time job. You know, the last thirteen years, I've been on city council and commissions and boards, and she has had to, to pick up the ball with my three boys. And I, I do, you know, I missed a lot of sporting events of theirs, religious events, school events. I hope to make up a little bit for the last two that are not in college. And, and I also try to be a role model to my family and the residents about volunteering for my hometown. I didn't have a hidden agendas, I think probably the only issue that really irked me was the bikers on Everett Road in Waughkegan, and I, I think I have a lot of supporters on that, but that was about my only agenda item that I won't let go, and I think I'll still carry that to this day. And, and the other thing is, I, I hope that, again, going back to my three boys, that, you know, that it does rub off, that they go out and volunteer. And I've seen that with my oldest, being a student leader at Dennison. I've seen that with my middle son, who was the president of student council at Deer Path, and is also in student council at the high school now, and my eighth grader, who's on the executive board of Croya. So that I'm most proud about, is I, I'm showing them, which I hope all our parents do in this community, is get your kids to volunteer and get out there, and not everything has to be paid for and paid by. City staff is another group, I, I wish Bob was here. Obviously Kathy, you know, the valuable times I've spent with ZBA and Plan Commission and on city council, she's just tremendous. Susan Banks, who answered all my emails and painted the ass questions, she did tremendous, and Beth and Corinne and, and Anne Whipple, and Tom Nance, and the Kens, the Ken Magason, Leonie, Ramish, and, and Michael, and Vic, and, you know, Mary from Parks and Rec, obviously Kathy Reinsen, the Croya Group, District sixty-seven, one fifteen, all those boards and superintendents and principals and everyone that I've dealt with, and obviously the Chiefs Burger and Howe for helping me out personally on some issues with our boys, and, and also being very good at their jobs. And then city council, obviously, I will be emailing and calling Kent and Dave daily, but no, just kidding. Obviously Kent, in, in our background with ZBA, was, you know, just a tremendous resource for me, and really, you know, helped me get, you know, this whole boards and commissions down, and, and really was a great mentor. And Dave, I mean, people just don't realize what Dave Gromhaus does. I mean, the guy is just unbelievable. He is such a resource for our city, and everything he does, and his mind and how he thinks, and really keeping us attuned in terms of our budget, is, is, is just, we are so lucky, and we are going to miss him dramatically. Second ward, Dave, obviously a newcomer, and, and I welcome you, and you're gonna be a great asset. Unfortunately, you went to Ripon College, which was my arch rival, so I won't hold that against you. Once again, Stu, in the three and a half years, I think he was here maybe once or twice, so I, I can't speak for him, but no, he, he, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna leave it on that. It's not a roast, no. Stu is incredibly insightful and does his homework, and, and I will miss him as well in his bow ties. Fourth ward, obviously Bob, legal mind and banker and background is just so valuable to this council, I will miss him. John is just one that I am just so glad I got to sit next to. He is, he is the historical society, he knows everything. I came here in nineteen seventy-seven, I feel like a newcomer. I mean, he just knows so much, and just always great to hear his stories and background of everything. He's, again, someone we are going to truly miss when his term is up. And then last is my partner in crime, Tom. Tom and I really, we're, had a great relationships in terms of working together for three and a half years. He, he really knows the, the state of our ward and, and the city, and, and I am biased, 'cause we both went to Beloit College, a small liberal arts college. Again, a success story that the little guys can make it, and it's not always about the big schools. But Tom was just a great friend and teammate, and I thought we worked really well together. I also like to thank some of the mayors that appointed me, you know, throughout the years, to the city council, as well as recommended, but also the boards and commission. That goes back to Ron Wad, you know, Mayor Kerr, Jack Preschlack, Mike Rumel, and now the current mayor, who's again been a great resource and helped to me. Also, all the people I've served with on the Spirit of Sixty-Seven, Parks and Rec Board, Parks and Rec Foundation, ZBA and Plan Commission, and all the thirteen years of the service that, with those people, they did tremendous job. I give a good luck to the new third ward alderman. I'm leaving with, there's city budget issues, there's affordable housing issues, Forest Beach, Laurel, Barra, Conway Farms, you know, you name it, we've got it in our ward, and tough times are ahead, and, and he's gonna have a challenge. Finally, you know, just some thoughts to the residents. I think I have, in the thirteen years of being in this, this city chambers, the, the attitude of some of the neighbors and residents has sometimes gone past the line, in terms of what they feel and say to people who volunteer. And I think, and, and to the people of city council and to some of these boards, as well as to city staff, sometimes I think you have to take a step back, and maybe channel that energy, and join a board or a commission, or volunteer, and see how it is on the other side. And I wish a lot of our residents, we've got a lot of residents who have a lot of time on their hands, they're not working, retired, get in there, get involved. That's my challenge to them, that's what my parents did to me and my brothers, I'm challenging you. Let's take that energy, the negative energy, let's make it positive. Thank you, everyone. Very well said. I think, I think that's, I've said it many, many times, and I don't wanna belabor this point, but I think that's what makes Lake Forest work, is that we are volunteers, we're here to do what we can do to serve the community, and there is no agenda. It's just to give back, and, and your point is very well taken, so I wanna continually make to the caucus, if you've got time on your hands, step up here, 'cause there's plenty of work to be done. So help out.
So true.
So, thank you again for everything you've done for us, and again, we're hoping to see you back here real soon.
Thank you.
With that, no other...
There is one more.
There's one more.
We do, okay. Oh, we do, that's right, the important things.
The important things. Alderman Hanrahan is...
Alderman Hanrahan, as a token of our appreciation and all the hard work and the time that you spent working with staff and the countless hours that you've worked on council and all the other boards and commissions, we do have a small token appreciation. One is in recognition of your contribution as an alderman, a tree will be planted in your honor at a location of choice within your ward. Of course, within regulations...
New ward. Did I have my front yard?
(laughter).
Yeah, name a park.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
Of course, your sign.
Oh, thank you. (inaudible). Open. Could've saved a tree.
Does he get an ash tree?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Maybe they will give you some respect.
Thank you.